I would also like to thank and acknowledge my co-chair for the public hearing, Council President Shannon Hardin, and thank my colleague, Council Member Nick Basen for also being here this evening. Council President, would you like to share your opening remarks at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for calling this important hearing to order, certainly to your team, Lucy and Jeff, and to Mark Carter with Technology. We appreciate you, and certainly to our Health Commissioner, the Safety Director's Office, health team, fire, police. We appreciate all the administration for their partnership and for being here. I'll keep my remarks brief so that we can move into the substance of tonight's meeting. The work that we'll discuss this evening is the future of public safety. The public is more, is asking for more flexible teams with different skills and capabilities. I believe that we as public servants have a, have to answer that call. Again, we want to thank the representatives that are here this evening, as well as the workers who are on the phones and on our streets daily as a part of these response units. My focus tonight and during the budget process will be squarely on the future of these efforts, with important questions like how do we allocate adequate resources? How do we design org charts and systems of accountability so that council and the public knows how well these efforts are working? And what new areas can we venture into to improve public safety in Columbus? I also apologize that I will be departing before the end of the hearing, but look forward to the follow-up. There are so many community advocates as well that I know that we'll hear from, but I think that their engagement, their feedback, their prodding and pushing is making us better, and thus, I'm grateful for them as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, Council President. Council Member Basen, do you have anything you'd like to add? All right. As a reminder, this hearing is currently live on YouTube and Facebook, and is also live and being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, Columbus's government television channel three. The rebroadcast schedule is also available at www.columbus.gov. Before we begin, I want to welcome and thank each of you, each of our presenters this evening: Dan Giannardella, the Deputy Director of Department of Public Safety; Ken Koontz, the Administrator, Division of Support Services, Department of Public Safety; Dr. Mashika Roberts, the Health Commissioner for the City of Columbus Public Health; Marion Stuckey, Section Chief, Neighborhood Social Services, Columbus Public Health. The City of Columbus has been hard at work, committed to providing the best and most forward-thinking alternative emergency response services to all residents and visitors of Columbus. Our residents face unique emergency situations daily that may not always deem a response from Columbus Police or other law enforcement services. This evening, we will be, we will be discussing four units implemented by the City of Columbus to address these unique needs of our residents: the Right Response Unit, Mobile Crisis Response, Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team, Specialized Program Assessing Resource Connectivity. And those are acronyms which we'll hear plenty of tonight. This evening, we will hear from the Departments of Public Safety and Public Health as they provide an overview of the alternative response infrastructure, successes, and updates. Without further ado, I will turn the floor over to our team of presenters, and I think, Dan G., you're up first. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Hardin, Chair Reimi, members of council. Again, thank you for allowing us to update you this evening and the community on the Right Response Unit and alternative response model, which of course is part of what we're attempting to do and respond to the community and demands to lessen the number of police officers that have to respond to some of our mental health and addiction issues. Many of us here this evening have been part of a series of updates on the Right Response Unit dating back to Mayor Ginther's launching the pilot program in May 2021. Also, many of us attended additional hearings and public addresses over the past year on the Right Response Model, notably in January 2022, and as recently as September 12th, when Mayor Ginther updated our community on the city's progress on this very important initiative. I am pleased to have with me this evening some of the people who have helped in organizing and implementing the Right Response Unit, such as Ken Koontz, Support Services Administrator, as well as Captain Matt Parrish from the Division of Fire, Lieutenant Charles Woldenga, and Captain Matt Parrish from Division of Police. Also here are our partners for Columbus Public Health, Health Commissioner Dr. Mashika Roberts and Marion Stuckey. And with that, I will allow Dr. Roberts to make some opening comments before we go through the rest of our program. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much for having us this evening. Violence is a public health issue, and as a result of that, Columbus Public Health is very proud to really, really honored to be working on this important issue with many of our city partners. You heard Dan G. mention, some of which are here tonight. Others that we have been working with on this issue include Wreckin' Parks and the Department of Neighborhoods, along with Columbus Fire, Columbus Police, and the Department of Public Safety. But we have to work together to address this issue in our community, and we realize that every single day. This evening, we're going to talk to you about some of the alternative responses that we have been working on here in our community to really meet our residents where they are and provide them the services that they need when they need them. I am so proud of my team at Columbus Public Health, but specifically the Division of Neighborhood Social Services, led by my colleague Marion Stuckey. They are all so passionate about this work. They invest their time, their energy, and really their hearts into this work, and you're going to hear about some of that this evening. So again, we feel very honored to work along our city partners on this very important issue for all of our residents here in Columbus. So, back to you, Dan.
Thank you. So, following Mayor Ginther announcing the pilot program on May 14, 2021, representatives from Public Safety, including Police, Fire, and Support Services, and Columbus Public Health, worked together to identify personnel and training procedures for what would be known as the Right Response Unit, the city's answer to connect individuals in crisis to alternative response for mental health and addiction calls, instead of immediately dispatching officers for events that may not require a police response. As we have seen, connecting individuals with the right resources reduces the reliance on traditional police and EMS for some crisis response situations. This initial step at the Right Response was significant expansion of a program that Public Safety launched with the help of Nationwide Children's Hospital in April of 2021 to triage juvenile mental health calls for service. The Right Response Unit practiced with mock calls during the first week of June 2021 to adjust procedures, and then began taking live calls at noon on June 7, 2021. As you will hear, data to date indicates that nearly a third of the calls triaged by the Right Response Unit do not require immediate police response. In addition, mental health and substance abuse calls that are diverted to the Right Response Unit oftentimes receive follow-up call or a visit from one of two division, in the, one of two Division of Fire programs, either the Rapid Response Emergency Addiction and Crisis Team, otherwise known as REACT, which that has a fire paramedic, as well as a CIT-trained police officer and a social worker, or the Special Program Assessing Resource Connectivity, otherwise known as SPARC, which also pairs a fire paramedic and a social workers. Calls that still may require police are likely to receive a visit from the Mobile Crisis Response Team, which also pairs a police officer and a Health Department's social workers, or a crisis intervention-trained officer. Initially, the unit operated Monday through Friday, noon to 4, when we first started. Earlier this year, the hours were extended so that calls were triaged from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and as of this week, the hours are now extended until midnight Monday through Friday. The RRU consists of a 911 dispatcher from the Division of Support Services and social workers from the Columbus Health Department. Is, has Marion joined us yet? I don't see. Yes? Oh, great. So, with that, Marion Stuckey, Columbus Public Health Neighborhood Social Works Section Chief, will go through some of the, our most recent stats that we have on what has been triaged through the RRU unit. Marion?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Again, it's our honor and privilege to be a part of this initiative, and I'll share some stats about how things have been going so far. Here you could see, this is a little description of how the, the program works. So, a caller contacts 911, and they either are self-directed or able to choose option three on the non-emergency line to get back to the RRU. The dispatcher determines if the situation involves a potential mental health crisis or a substance use disorder crisis. From there, the call takers obtain residence permission to connect with the team. The call is transferred to an RRU clinician, and at that point, the clinician is able to do a thorough, in-depth assessment and attempt to stabilize and de-escalate the situation. And so from there, if needed, clinicians work with 911 dispatchers and CFD paramedics to dispatch to the proper, the proper personnel for the scene. And so essentially, I'd like to really emphasize that this allows us to spend as much time as is needed with that caller and to really triage and assess and use the time that it takes to get to the scene to de-escalate. So, it's really been quite powerful to have just however long it takes. There's been calls that have lasted for 45 minutes to an hour, to really understand what's happening with that caller and to really build rapport, which is difficult on the phone, but it's something that we've been able to really do over the past several months. So, the success of the Right Response Unit includes, from June of 2021 through September, there's been nine, 1,968 events that were triaged. So, just, just under 2,000 events that were triaged. And from there, I'll just share some of the highlights from this slide. Approximately 30% of the events, so that's about 544 calls for service, did not require any police response. The calls are immediately triaged, and this includes, again, the calls are going right directly to a mental health, a licensed mental health clinician, oftentimes with six-plus years of mental health experience, and they're able to get free and immediate mental health service right there from a social worker. Essentially, there was no use of force situations or events involved with the RRU. And there's been a number of referrals that have resulted. 473 referrals were connected with local mental health providers, and then 30 were referred to the VA. So, you can see there was been, there's been various results that have happened, and connections and referrals from the calls. In terms of our success continued, so we have 59 referrals that have come to Columbus Public Health Neighborhood Social Work Program, and again, just emphasizing the continuum of care that we have right within CPH to be able to work with the caller and then help to, just work with them over the course of several months or weeks, whatever is needed. 193 referrals went to the SPARC program, 24 went to Adult Protective Services. De-escalation took place with approximately 50% or 540 of the calls and the police responses involving RRU. So again, just really utilizing every moment, every second that we have to de-escalate and to, again, build rapport with that caller and understand their needs. 194 events required a police response because sometimes we're not able to make contact with the caller, or they do sometimes refuse assistance. And then finally, I'll just highlight how the RRU has had a positive influence on the dispatch center and employees there, just by being able to de-escalate and just debrief after calls. So again, we're talking about crisis calls and extremely difficult, emotionally difficult calls. So, to be able to create infrastructure to support staff, no matter what department they work in, is really important. And sustainability in this work requires secondary traumatic stress interventions that are immediate and on the spot. And so, you'll see here in this slide, this emphasizes all the different spaces within Columbus that we've been able to triage calls and provide RRU services. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dan.
Thank you, Marion. And, thank you, Marion. So, now, I'll talk a little bit about some of the information with respect to some of those actual alternative response units, other than the direct one. Obviously, Marion talked about the calls coming into the RRU, the triaging by social workers, but we also have what we call our secondary response as well. And of course, our Mobile Crisis Response, which is a police specialized units. Mobile Crisis Response Teams are available usually 10:00 a.m. to midnight, Monday through Sunday, pretty much every day of the year that we have officers and social workers available. The Mobile Crisis Teams pair a CIT-trained officer with a Columbus Public Health social worker. All of our office, or many of our officers are CIT-trained. They focus on de-escalation situations with individuals experiencing mental health crisis. Over two-thirds of our patrol officers have received CIT training, including every new officer that we hire and place on the street. MCR teams, as I said, consist of that CIT officer and a clinician specializing in mental health from the Columbus Health Department. The calls for service in which an MCR unit responds rarely result in any use of force arrest, and no officers engaged with MCR units have ever used deadly force. Following the initial interaction with MCR, these units can refer people to our secondary response. They can refer to our SPARC team for follow-up care as well. The Columbus Police Officers that are assigned to these units not only receive CIT training, but approximately over the last two years, about 74% of all of our mental health calls for service received a response from either a CIT-trained officer or an MCR officer. We receive about 23,000 calls annually for mental health disturbance. We, that has actually been pretty consistent. It's stayed back to 2019. We looked at our stats for the last few years. They actually haven't increased that much. We were curious to see perhaps what, what had happened post-pandemic. Our calls from 2019 to 2020, 2020 were mostly flat, again, about 21,000 calls, and in 2021, our calls were up about four, a little over 4%, about 4.4%, about 1,000 calls annually, which amounts to about three or four extra calls a day. So, probably, I think we were thinking those calls would be a little bit higher, but the volume ticked up, as I said, only a little over 4%. Over the past two years also, 2021 and 22, an average of 15% of our mental health calls for service have involved an MCR officer response. And so far this year, approximately one-third of our mental health-related calls for service have resulted in a transport to a local hospital or a mental health-related facility. We also talked about the REACT team, which basically focuses on the addiction crisis. The REACT teams have been around for several years now. They also do follow-up on all of our non-fatal overdoses. The REACT teams offer a substance abuse assistance. They link individuals for treatments, provide transportation if necessary, the aid through the recovery process, and offer resources to help stabilize households. In partnership also with addiction centers, they connect overdose patients with same-day access to treatment. They also conduct community trainings on the use of Narcan. This program is designed to provide harm reduction and prevention of overdose deaths and help link individuals with the appropriate substance abuse disorder treatment programs. Also, the, the SPARC unit, which we had talked about earlier, also, in partnership with the Central Ohio Area Office on Aging, identifies older adults and people that might have disabilities or frequently contact 911. So, this is more the EMS side, but again, we can pick up and help with other issues that might be related to substance abuse as well. Over 16,000 individuals referred to the SPARC program in 2021. The Division of Fire estimates that this potentially reduces EMS calls for service anywhere from 10,000 to 15,000 annually. And again, this is a, this is a program that is available on an ad hoc basis to all people in Franklin County. 988, which is something that's just come online. I know that, I think Sue Villo is here tonight. I'm not going to, I'm sure she can talk way more tonight, if she would like to, about the integration of that and how that has come online. But basically, this is the introduction of the National Mental Health and Substance Abuse Crisis Hotline, which began in July of 2022. Other items being addressed as we move forward, obviously, our Division of Support Services, we continue to hire 911 call takers and dispatchers for use in the, the Right Response Unit. Right now, we have at least two, and two dispatchers assigned to that room. There are multiple social workers in the, in the RRU. When we first started, we had one supervisor, one social worker, one dispatcher. Now, one dispatcher usually will work with up to three social workers, again, with those new hours, 8:30 to midnight, Monday through Friday. We also, obviously, staffing for Public Safety to ensure personnel are available for some of these alternative response units. The mayor and, and council in 2022 provide us with 170 police officers, multiple classes of firefighters. So, obviously, we're continuing to hire and obviously look to add teams to that as we go forward. Vehicles as well is something we continue to look at, vehicles for both our SPARC, REACT, and MCR teams. The current model, again, we've talked a little bit about this already, the staffing, Support Services, two dispatchers, Columbus Public Health, obviously with social workers and six full-time social, social workers in that RRU, as well as part-time, the SPARC units. We have two fire paramedics, two social workers, with, along with our partner agencies. Again, our REACT teams, there are three of those, with fire captain, lieutenant, six firefighter paramedics, four CIT-trained police officers, and again, our MCR units, of which there are five, five officers, a sergeant, a social worker, and one paramedic assigned to those units as well. I'd like now also to give a little shout-out to some of our success stories. There are a number of the social media and news articles that have been done over the past year. So, we would like to play some of these. It'll really give you a much more in-depth of how we run the RRU and the, the help of some of these alternative teams that we have.
So, did you call in to the police today? I was just wondering how I could support you. When individuals have mental health concerns, it's, you know, one of the scariest times in your life.
When I first started in this business many years ago, our mental health calls were minimal.
Does she have any weapons in her room, anything sharp that she could harm herself with?
And now, my guess would be, mental health calls could possibly be one in four.
Um, hi, this is Alberta from the Right Response Unit, Columbus Police. How are you doing today?
It's changing the ways that we've done things for years and years.
We've helped a lot of people.
My name is Alberta Mohammed. I am currently a community crisis clinician with the City of Columbus. I work for Columbus Public Health, but I am a social worker that's embedded here at 911.
Traditionally, 911 was designed to respond to house fires and heart attacks, calls that need an urgent emergent response. You know, time is of the essence.
Many of these runs, there's not a police nexus, but a lot of times, there was just no one else to send in the moment, so we just dispatched officers anyway, and we would kind of expect them to do the best they could in this situation.
The Right Response Unit is a triage pod within the call center, the radio room, that will receive a call that is, has a nexus to mental health.
Basically, took a trained clinician, put them back with our call takers, who can now take a different look at that run, triage it, decide whether or not they feel it's suitable to send police, fire, or maybe a different resource.
We're changing the way we're responding to them. We're not focusing on how fast we get it done. We're really looking at getting the right response and the right resource in the right amount of time.
Let's be thinking three or four steps ahead of this person who's in crisis on what the best avenue would be for them to get the help or assistance that they need.
Well, just to let you know, we have a 34C and pet singer.
All right, you can go ahead and put this on. So, you do have a mental health provider, or you do not? Okay. Okay. And you are taking your medicine? So, maybe the plan we can make is...
We started in June, and we surveyed, I believe it was three months worth of data, and the outcomes were really amazing in the sense that calls that traditionally would have gotten a public safety response, 50% of the time, we were able to manage that call by referring them to a outside partner. We reduced, significantly reduced the number of calls where we did have to respond where police were included.
We have stopped people or interrupted them in trying to harm themselves. We've gotten people to services they needed. We've helped officers have to go, not go out on things that they couldn't really do too much with, and got people where they needed to go. Sometimes the police have to come, and that's okay. And sometimes, we will be on the phone, and we will just help de-escalate individuals to kind of be in a more calm state if police or fire does have to come.
Like, how is she with police officers?
The collaborative effort, effort has been absolutely phenomenal.
We broke down some of those silos to say, we're all going to be involved. How can we do it the best way?
I think we're getting different resources there that might be more effective in the moment, but it also benefits the community in another aspect because now, these first responders are free for other calls for service.
Our goal is to make sure that you have enough resources, that you're able to, you know, navigate your next mental health challenge for yourself or your family member. There's a lot of good work that goes on in Columbus, and we're here to kind of spread the word and give that information to people. I'm humbled that I can serve. I'm humbled that I've been able to help people. And, yeah, just, I, I'm so glad, like, to be here. Like, it's, I couldn't think of anything else I'd rather do.
So, Alberta, she's one of our real stars. She was one, I think, our first social worker that we had, and has just really done, done an excellent job for us. If we can get to the, the next one, thank you.
Every crisis is different for everybody. For some people in the moment, it may not seem like a crisis. For others, it is at 10, and they need help immediately. The Right Response Unit, we are a group of clinicians, so we're either licensed social workers with the State of Ohio, or licensed clinical counselors. We are embedded here at the radio room with the 911 Dispatch Center and help manage mental health calls that come in. Sometimes they just need resources. Sometimes, some people just need help de-escalating, like, they just don't know how to get their body and their mind to calm down. First responders have their hands full. Our community partners have their hands full. Like, everyone is just working extra hard, even here. Like, dispatchers, everyone's working just extra hard overtime to support the community of Columbus. So, we're just happy that we can be a part of that. We always want to be an ear that's listening. We want to be supportive, and we want to help kind of figure out that outcome that makes sense. Providing the city with that autonomy, I think, is just huge. I think it's, makes them feel empowered again.
There is such a stigma to mental health.
Internet! The internet, not everything on the internet's true.
But if our anxiety gets to the point where it's starting to control our life, it causes depression.
People who suffer from mental health issues are often marginalized in society, and quite honestly, they're, they're, they are often victimized.
That level of anger's not healthy.
What are the voices saying?
This is our truth, and you're all going to accept it.
Okay. Got me?
So, this is the theory of everything?
Yes.
We have to get you to the hospital.
People don't realize here in the city how many resources they have here.
I'm Sergeant Matt Harris. I'm with the Mobile Crisis Response Unit.
720 to Zone 3, where's MCR needed?
We've been operational for over three years now. We respond to mental health crisis situations or psychiatric emergencies all day long, for 10 hours a day during our shift, and we do that citywide. We'll go anywhere that we need to, to address these type of issues.
We started tracking numbers in 2017, and each year since then, that number of mental health-related calls for service has increased by thousands, and that trend is continuing through 2021. The caller believes that this person may be having some sort of a mental breakdown, and that the person might need some help.
It's like there's a bunch of people pointing him out, and he looks pretty agitated.
Hey, man, what's going on? Do you also have a mental health diagnosis?
No, I need to.
What do you think, what do you think's going on?
There's a fair percentage of calls that, that don't require a traditional police response.
Female 514 Riverside.
We transport approximately 1,200 people to area hospitals or mental health crisis centers each year that we've been doing this. centers each year that we've been doing this. So far, we've not had any significant use-of-force incidents involving those transports. So, to me, that's a great success. I want to make sure that you're okay. The goal is always to make a connection with somebody, and the way that we do that is we approach in a non-offensive, non-aggressive way, person to person, right, human to human. You know, hey, help me to understand what's happening. How can I help you?
Yeah, we just come up, we want to make sure everything's safe, and we just want to make sure we lay eyes on you.
Right now, there's myself as the unit sergeant and five officers, and we currently pair with two mental health clinicians. The clinicians are fantastic, because if we respond to a situation where maybe an individual's had a bad experience with the police, or they have some, we may trigger some fear just with the uniform, we have a person who's not a police officer there with us that can talk to that individual, so we can try to figure out the best solution from both a law enforcement and a mental health perspective at the same time.
I think you know in your heart that we would not come up trying to trick you. We've seen what was going on with you. You definitely look a lot better and a lot less anxious today than you did when we seen you last time, but I can still see, yes, I can see it going up real quick.
Other police officers are really good at getting drugs off the street, getting guns off the street, dealing with, you know, traffic-type scenarios. For me personally, this type of work resonates with me, and I just feel like it's what I was meant to be doing within the policing profession.
So, we have one more video, and you can see from these, these are the real heroes, and some of them are here tonight that are doing this tremendous work, so we can queue up that last one. Thank you.
It's a lot of knocking on doors and not really knowing what's on the other side. Coming to policing, there's a lot of seeing where you fit and seeing where you can do the most good. My name's Rachel, this is Brian. We're with the Columbus Fire React Team. When I started with CPD, this job didn't exist, and I'm telling you now, it's my dream job. He's just got to say, I can go today, I can make this commitment. I'm Officer Rachel Thomas. I've been with the Columbus Division of Police for nine years, and I'm a member of the React Team.
That ended up in an overdose.
React is the Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team. What we do is we get referrals and respond out following a non-fatal overdose to assist the person who has experienced the overdose in getting into treatment if they are ready, and to provide harm reduction, like Narcan or Naloxone, and fentanyl test strips. Obeits are being put into just about everything now. This is a way for them to tell whether or not what they are choosing to consume may have fentanyl in it. Straight out of college, I was a social worker. I worked for a nonprofit called The Buckeye Ranch, which was a great experience, and kind of got looking around what's next, what do I want to do, and what's my skill set? One of the special duty officers at the ranch said, Rachel, you've really got to go do a ride-along. You've got to experience what this is and how you can make it yours. And I did not believe him until I did the ride-along, and the things that I was seeing, it defied kind of what I expected. I thought, from, you know, television and my experiences as a caseworker, that I knew what police work was. He was stopping to talk to people, to check on people, and this is third shift, so middle of the night, and we're in the Linden area, and he was doing all the things that I didn't really know police officers did, so it gave me an opportunity to see, wow, like, that fits with my values, that fits with how I want to interact with the community and what I want my job to be. I applied at the next window for applications, and went through all the steps, and finally got on in 2013. The epidemic hasn't slowed at all, and when things went from heroin use to fentanyl, the deaths really took off. So, the problem, it's not going away. If anything, it may be getting worse. He'll place plunge, so peel it out of there, place it up the nostril, just plunge the plunger up. It's that simple. I have had people in my family that have needed to get treatment and have had to, you know, kind of walk this path. When you see that up close firsthand with somebody that you've known, it makes you realize how difficult this whole thing is, and nobody's choosing to use and to stay in a life that is obviously not good for them or anybody. We treat everybody like somebody out of our own family or our own friends. How would we deal with this? You got to take care of you just as much as everybody else. The best days are the days we get to take somebody into treatment. If you can take and treat the substance use disorder, all of the things that, you know, the low-level crimes, the overdoses, the calls for service go away when that person is functioning better, which is to say nothing of the wonderful impact on their family, on, you know, their neighbors, the community at large. The rewarding thing is knowing that we have so many people that are, you know, living healthy lives, their families are making steps to be, you know, more functional, more happy. It's so rewarding, and it's so neat to be able to regularly see people on the path to succeeding and doing better for themselves, even if we're just a small part.
Again, thank you. I don't know that we could sit up here and talk about statistics and numbers. I think the videos really explain the good work that is going on out there. Just to kind of emphasize some of the intangibles that Marion had mentioned earlier, first of all, we ask individuals, no one's being forced to, you know, have their call transferred to the RRU. Our call takers are trained to, you know, recognize those calls, see if they are appropriate for something that might go to the RRU where the social workers are, and then those individuals are asked if that's, if they would like to have that type of help. I think the other thing that Marion talked about was they get immediate help. You know, in the past, you call 911, and you're looking for this type of help, you're waiting, you know, for either an officer, or in maybe some cases, one of the other response units to come out, or a CIT-trained officer. Now, you have the opportunity to get immediate help with a licensed-trained social worker, and you did hear Marion and some of the commentators talk about, some of these calls can go on for a while, that de-escalation process, which also helps us, because in the event that police still has to show up, there's a very good chance, a high percentage of these calls, there's de-escalation that's going on, the social worker is talking to the individual while police is en route, helping to help alleviate that situation and providing information to that officer when they get there. So, there are a lot of sort of what we call intangible benefits that we're seeing as well. Not to mention that we estimate, just in the, you know, the roughly 2,000 calls we've done, we've probably freed up about 900 hours of police officer time as well. So, just those things that perhaps aren't obvious, you don't look at them in terms of dollars and cents, but they are great intangibles for our community and also benefiting in many ways our response model as well. So, that's the information we have to present tonight. We'd be happy, our team is here to attempt to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Council President Harden, I want to give you the opportunity to ask questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the team for presenting. I do agree also that seeing Sergeant Harris and those folks out there, seeing the call taker, Alberta, taking the calls, does put a face to it, but also shows that this is hard work. It's hard work, but it's also hard work, and we're grateful. I'm also grateful that we kind of, we made this transition kind of pretty quickly. Some of this stuff started in 2017, but a lot of it has scaled up pretty quickly since last year, and for that, I'm also grateful. One of the things that, you know, I focus on now as we look to a program that obviously is showing success, obviously, it has proven benefits to providing the appropriate care to some of our residents, but also, on the other side of public safety, to your point, freeing up 900 hours so that other officers could focus on other types of crime, is more of a structure question, or structure questions, scalability questions, and future offerings. And so, one of the questions that I asked last hearing was around, do we know how much money we are spending cross-department on this effort so far?
Sorry, I'm having a hard time getting my microphone up. President Harden, Chair Rimi, members of council. So, within public safety alone, and we talked a little bit about this, I think, when we had our budget hearing very early this year, maybe late last year, probably right now, about $3 million when you look at the teams that we currently have in place. Now, that would be within public safety. You probably have at least, I'm guessing, probably another $1 million within public health due to the number of social workers and supervisors they have hired as well. So, you know, you're somewhere probably in that $4 to $5 million range right now when we look at how we have things staffed up.
When we, as we move into budget season, I will ask this question again, and I would like to see it cross-departmental, because I think it gives council a better perspective of the total resources that are being presented, but it also starts to speak to a larger opportunity around structure and/or making sure that there is clarity in terms of how this program, where it is housed from a cross-departmental standpoint, but also how we can, as an oversight body, legislative body, support its growth, because I think that there is strong support of this moving forward in real ways. Another question that I have is around, when are we able to offer the different services? I know that in terms of thinking, again, my mind is thinking about structure, scale, where do we go from here, knowing that, you know, MCR is available at certain hours. How do, is there a way that we can talk about that in more specificity, and then talk about the goals for where we would like to get to, almost as we, so much of this is kind of right at the cusp of our budget conversations, and so, I'm kind of using this as a teaser and a help for how I will engage with you guys in the next month or so.
Yes, President Harden, Chair Rimi, members of council, you're absolutely right. President Harden, obviously, the mayor's probably, you know, soon to be, I think by code, November 15th anyway, has to submit that budget. I'm sure there'll be some items in there that will address some of these alternative responses. I mean, right now, we are, first of all, let me say that council and the mayor administration have been great in providing funds for these programs and for the RRU, so we're very grateful for that. Right now, we are very focused on building up our successes and expanding the RRU in terms of calls. We have an excellent collaborative relationship with Columbus Public Health. They, obviously, we're so happy to be able to, you know, extend those hours, basically double the time that we're going to be able to triage those calls. I know that's something that Columbus Health's been working on and hiring social workers to staff that, so we're really excited about that. So, we are excited to see what our numbers are going to look like. I think just in the past three months over the summer, we tweaked up our call line a little bit, and we were able to increase our call volume by 30%, and some of that, of course, was that we increased the hours this past year, and then, of course, we made a bigger emphasis on pushing calls into that Right Response Unit. So, now that we're doubling our time, Columbus Health, with social workers, are going to 16 hours, I think we're really anxious to see here in the last quarter, you know, what is that going to look like in terms of the number of touches they get, enable the number of services, you know, people they're able to help. So, we're really excited about the numbers and what that will look like, and that will also help us begin to look at, how do we continue to build this out? Where do we go from here? What are our next steps? And those discussions are happening. I mean, we meet very regularly with Columbus Public Health and their representatives, Assistant Commissioner Anita Clark and her staff, and Marion, and so, those discussions have been going on, they will continue to go on, as to where are we, you know, where are we headed from here? What does our call volumes look like? What is the data telling us? What problems are we trying to solve? Thank you.
And last question, and then kind of more of a statement. I know that my friend, Stephen David, is going to ask questions and has asked questions of us around the future of this work, and as, and how we feel about a purely non-police response team. And it is something that I am very interested in, I support, but also, what I tell my friends that are advocating, is that we're trying, I'm trying to also create the space for you guys to grow a program and get the structure right, and not put the cart before the horse. But are there any, are there any models out there of non-police response that we could look to towards the future? And I know that, sorry, Captain Parrish has done a lot of work in this space and knows a lot of different models around the country, but even, I was watching the news the other day, and Dayton has a non-police response-type team. Are there other models that we're looking out there that could give us a guide map to how we could continue to offer more offerings to an already great program with many offerings?
President Harden, Chair Rimi, members of council, the short answer is yes, and we are looking at those. Again, working with Columbus Public Health, I think it's crucial, the role that they have to play with us and the partnership on that. And, you know, candidly, some of our secondary response models don't have an officer with them right now, you know? So, you know, our Spark team and so forth. So, yes, I think there's a role there. Those are programs that are being talked about. Obviously, we're not ready to announce anything tonight, but I think you can see that that is certainly a place where a lot of, you know, a lot of this work is headed, for sure.
Certainly, and then just my last statement is that when we have these hearings and we bring the administration, sorry, and I apologize, I do have to run, but this is so important to us, though. But as we have these conversations and we bring folks, bring the administration in, I think it also, it often surprises the community advocates of the good work that is being done. And so, one of the things that I think is an opportunity for us, and something that council will advance, and I sent information to the mayor's office this week, is on a community advisory committee, so that we can have more regular back-and-forth between the advocates who are, want us to go in a certain direction, and the administration who is already going in that direction in a lot of ways, but have that two-way back-and-forth in the community so that we can create more ambassadors for a program that is growing and doing well. And so, that's something that I would just like to work with the administration on in the next month or so.
Yes, thank you, President Harden, and again, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and have this discussion. I do, I know I answered several of those questions. I would like to offer Dr. Roberts, if she's still behind me, an opportunity to address any of those things, those questions you might have as well.
There we go. Thank you, Council President Harden, Chair Rimi. Just to echo some of the things that Dan mentioned already, we are working to hire. It is challenging, as you all know, to hire in this climate, but we are continuing to work hard, and Marion and her team are interviewing on a regular basis. I do just want to make a comment to your community advisory committee. That is something that we have looked at, and we have talked to other cities of similar size of how they've handled that, and so, that's something on our radar at public health of how we can work together with our residents to help control violence and mental health issues in our community.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. Councilmember Baines?
Thank you, Councilmember Rimi, for your leadership and for hosting this. My question is around the Right Response Unit. I guess it's probably more anecdotal, or if it is quantitative, that'd be great as well. You know, getting those responses, how helpful is that to our officers, and happy to hear from them, to have the context when they're going into a situation? How important is that, just as much as making sure that we have the right response, show
Well, I'm sure it's very much appreciated, and that the more information we can provide our officers as they arrive on a scene about an issue is extremely beneficial to them, and I don't know if Sergeant Harris has access to a microphone, but I'm sure he could probably give much more firsthand account of that, but I'm sure it's extremely beneficial. Sergeant, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, thanks for the question, council member. I would say that it's extremely beneficial. What happens is when we obtain all that information from the Right Response Unit, it gives us a head... a heads up, we know what we're walking into, it decreases the amount of questions that we have to ask when we get on scene, potentially shortening the amount of time so we can move on to the next crisis call, but it's certainly beneficial in multiple ways. And then the other thing, and I know it was mentioned earlier, is that when you have somebody who is really agitated on the line with a mental health professional, they're continuously working to get that person just down a few notches and maybe a little more calm. That way, when we arrive, it's easier for us to do our job. The other thing that they're really, really good at is explaining to them, look, they say, you know, the police are coming, however, this is a special team, these are police officers who do crisis work every day, and they sort of are able to reduce that potential fear or anxiety of having law enforcement show up, so they do tremendous work in assisting us. By the time we get on the scene, it's usually pretty easy to, we already know what's happening and how we're going to work to resolve the situation.
Yeah, thank you for that, because I just want to make sure folks understand that that context is everything. You know, our officers get called to so many situations, they don't know what they're walking into, and that's where we get a lot of, you know, issues that, you know, quite frankly, we don't know what the response could be, so thank you for adding that clarity. The other question, and maybe it's more common than a question, Deputy Director, because I think you did answer it, is around the sustainability piece, and I know that what we're spending now in those figures that you gave, but the question I think about as we go into budget season, what does this look like to sustain it on its own, right? I know that our officers are already stretched, our firefighters in particular, I know I've spoken firsthand to them, they're already stretched as well, so programs like this are amazing, but we're utilizing our current personnel. So, has there been thought to process to, how do we replace and subplant some of those officers that have now been taken, say, off of regular duty, or some of our firefighters have been taken off of regular duty to be on the React team and some of those other special teams?
Yes, Councilmember Banksen, Chair Reamy, so the administration, the mayor, council have been very gracious in this past budget year. We had had three classes of both police officer and firefighters, some of the highest numbers that we have run through our academies in decades. As I said, the goal was 170 police officers, I believe, I want to say about 150 firefighters. So, obviously, the mayor will have some more to say about that here in the coming days in terms of what those class and strengths look like for 2023, but there has not been a question of resources. I think, as I said, council and the mayor have provided us with the funds to do the, you know, to backfill these positions. We also know, and Dr. Roberts alluded to it, you know, the economy has really changed for us, so it's a challenge for everyone, private sector, public sector, in terms of hiring really all positions. So, you know, obviously, we're not getting the huge number of applicants at times that we used to get for positions across the board, but we are continuing to hire, we are continuing, we have classes currently right now, police officer and firefighter, so, and we're going to need to continue to do that, as you say, if we're going to continue to build these programs out. So, it's challenging, but you're seeing the work that these individuals are doing, and you have some very committed people behind me and others that are in this room today, and I think many of us are committed to seeing this through.
Thank you, and no more questions, Chair, but I just want to make sure I point out something, and Dr. Roberts or Marion, if you want to chime in. It was interesting to me to see that map where the responses were, because yet again, it's that upside-down T that we see in our community, and so we're doing all the things we can to invest in right response, doing everything that we can to make sure that our officers get the resources they need, but we're not going to police our way out of this. We have some deep-rooted systemic societal issues that we have to invest in as a community, and so I just want to commend Department of Safety and Public Health for partnering up on this, because this is one way that we can tackle that, and just want to commend Dr. Roberts and her team for really taking the mantle on it, looking at violence as a public health crisis, because we do know that it stems from other societal issues, and that upside-down T that we continue to see in so many areas, right, vacant abandoned housing, violent crime, when you look at education, infant mortality, it's all in that same geography. So, thank you all for being innovative, being open and responsive to this, and looking forward to supporting this endeavor in the future.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Banksen. Yeah, I kind of want to dive in a little bit about goals for '23, and certainly, you know, I'm excited to see the expansion of right response, you know, Monday through Friday. However, would it be safe to say that the goal would be that this is a seven-day-a-week operation and not just a Monday through Friday ultimately? I'm going to ask that to Dr. Roberts.
Sorry, having some trouble with the mic. Chair Reamy, thanks for that question, and I think, obviously, the goal for all of us is to be able to provide our wonderful city services 24/7. So, that is our ultimate goal. How long it will take us to get there really depends on staffing as well as additional resources, so that is the end game, obviously, but we're not quite there yet.
So, in knowing that, obviously, we, you know, being Chair of Administration, I know these struggles are not, you know, just specific to your mission, and certainly, we see it just as much in refuse and utilities, et cetera, et cetera, but are there innovative ways that we're attempting to address these hiring, you know, difficulties, and are there ways that we, as council, can help support those goals, whether it be, you know, signing bonuses, et cetera, to help to achieve, you know, our ultimate mission?
Yeah, I mean, that's a heavy question. I think that the workforce now has very different expectations than they had in 2019, and as a government agency trying to hire and employ and maintain employees with 2019 practices can be challenging, and I know I've had discussions with the administration about that. You know, I can speak for my department, a lot of our work cannot be done remotely, and many people now, that's what they want. They want that type of flexibility, but healthcare cannot be done remotely, nor can safety, and so I think we, as city government, need to just really think outside the box of what we can do to entice individuals to come work for us, knowing that there are just certain things that we can't offer in 2022 and beyond that many have learned to expect as a result of this pandemic.
What, and this probably goes back to Dan G., but this is something I asked for in a previous hearing, what efforts have been made to educate the community on these resources, and where can residents go to get more information? Because, you know, as I do a search online, I don't see any real opportunities, and I'm sure if I can't find it, that most people can't.
Chair Reamy, Members of Council, certainly, these hearings help. Some of those videos that we've showed tonight are a couple of years old, so they've been out there on social media, so they are available out there. We've also had our, several of our own staffs help produce many of these videos, and these aren't all the ones that we have put out there. So, there is, there's actually quite a bit of information. We've had a lot of interest from media, both print media and also television in our right response unit, so, you know, I don't think there's been more than three or four weeks that go by, we don't get some type of inquiry either from local media or national media as to what we're doing and how it's going and what we're going to move forward with. So, there's a lot out there. I, I'm not going to suggest there probably isn't some more things that we couldn't do, but we are, as I said, real, we're just so focused right now on increasing our hours that a lot of our, that's gotten a lot of our attention, but there are a lot of things out there on it. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I am going to make this request again. Could you put up Slide 1 for me on this presentation? This, this should be a landing page that our residents can go to online to find out more information, so if they want to click on React, they can, it'll dive through to further information, right response, dive through, you know, go to the next, you know, page. Doesn't have to be robust, but basically this presentation, so that people in our community, and when I'm out speaking and my colleagues are out speaking, can say, you need to go to columbus.gov/alternacr, or, you know, whatever the landing page it needs to be, but that needs to be done, and I would hope that would be done here relatively Has there been any collaboration with surrounding municipalities who we often serve or receive services from? Obviously, you know, there's, you know, we share information all the time, so I kind of want to understand if we're working with other municipalities in this effort.
And to my knowledge, I mean, we are the sort of the big kid on the block when it comes to this. I might refer to a couple of my colleagues as to what they're hearing, what some of the suburban communities are doing. I don't know that any of them are as far ahead as we are, but I'll throw it back to perhaps Ken Coons in Support Services who helps with the RRU, or some of my partners in Policeman Fire, certainly Sergeant Harris or Captain Parrish, with the surrounding community, what might, what they might be doing. Ken, you want to start?
Thank you, Director. Yes, there's been some talks with other communications centers throughout Franklin County. We have been meeting somewhat. I know Sue Villal may have more to talk about in that realm. We are certainly working very close with Franklin County, but we, as you said, Director, we are the leader in the area right now, and we are certainly offering our assistance to the other communities around us who have an interest in learning more about what we're doing and what are our successes and some of the barriers that we've seen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And this goes to Captain Parrish. I'd like to kind of expound on a question that Council President asked, but more about, like, what are we seeing out there across the nation? I know you're kind of the expert at this from not only our local level, but kind of leaned on as a statewide expert and national expert due to our work, so I'm kind of curious, like, who are we emulating? Is, are, you know, people emulating us, that sort of thing?
Chair Reamy, Councilmember Banksen, whoop, thank you. Yeah, I think we are kind of ahead of the curve in developing this alternative response model, and, you know, if you've heard me talk about this before, it's pretty basic. It's like someone to call, someone to come, and somewhere to go, and our efforts have been really focused on the someone to call right now, and really building out that to have a better understanding and knowledge of what resources we do need to have available to deploy and to send to folks. When you ask about the question about municipalities, there's a large group in the state through OMS that has been working on really setting some standards and developing policies and processes for mobile crisis response, whether those are first responder-led teams or community-led teams. Just the collaboration it's taken here in Columbus within our own city and the own agencies to blend this model, following rules that keep us in compliance and doing things the right ways, has taken some time. So, imagine bringing in even more partners into that, into that mix. So, I've been working as part of that task force with the state to really help develop those standards, and that will really help us guide as we build out our response models. So, one, and that could be everything from, you know, these are licensed providers that operate, in my case, I operate under our medical director's license, the clinicians operate under their own license. When we're working together, who's responsible for the care of that individual, right? What protocols are you following? So, it's not as easy as just putting a couple of folks together in a car and saying, hey, go check on somebody. There's a lot of compliance and regulatory issues that we still have to sort through, and then you add the funding into that piece, and there's opportunity for reimbursement models, you know, for these teams. So, there is a lot of work going on in that space, but our efforts to this point have been heavily focused on who to call and really building out the capacity and that skillset for that component. We've been fortunate that we've had teams like MCR and React in place for years now, so we've learned a lot in those co-responder models. We talked a little bit about the 988, and, you know, the question for Dr. Roberts about building out that workforce and making this a 24/7 operation, you know, as we are all competing for staff to staff this, could 988 be a great secondary backup during those after-hours, because they've already got a 24-hour operation? There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but is there a possibility when our staff goes home that we can transfer those calls to 988 and they can still direct the response teams from that piece? And then, that's a huge expander of the workforce that's available to do this work. So, there are several models out there that are really great. I think what we're building here is better than all of them, and I don't say that just because it's us. I've seen the work, I've met with folks from Denver and Albuquerque and Portland and Seattle, and still communicate and share ideals with them regularly, but I think what we're building from a totality of care, system of care, we are ahead of the curve.
And talking a little bit about, well, I know there's other opportunities too, like a nurse triage line, you know, with the, maybe we will use as a form of dispatch could also help fill those gaps. The reimbursement model, you know, I think there, it needs to be either fire or licensed clinician, is that correct, for transport? Am I thinking correctly of what I've been told?
Yeah, without getting too far into the weeds on that, there's so much regulation that goes into this, from even from how your vehicle is staffed, how it's equipped, what its capabilities are. You know, Sergeant Harris mentioned that, in the video, he mentioned that the MCR team transports around 1,200 individuals to area hospitals or crisis centers every year, and that's a small fraction of what patrol and EMS transport as well. But, you know, these, these folks are going to a hospital to get mental health and a lot of time, medical care, and if the system was built appropriately and we met those compliance, that could, we could be reimbursed for those transports.
Okay. Thank you very much, Captain Parrish, I appreciate it. Thank you to all of you for your presentation tonight. I would like to move into the public speaking portion of this, and tonight, we have six public speakers this evening, and we have received one piece of written testimony. As I call you up, I would like you to state your name and the organization that you may be associated with, and you will have three minutes to speak. So, our first speaker this evening is Stephen David, and following that will be Sue Villal. Welcome back to council. You have three minutes.
Chair Reamy, Councilmember Banksen, thank you so much for hosting these conversations on our city's need for non-police emergency infrastructure. My name is Stephen David. I'm a social worker. I live in Marion Village in Columbus, Ohio, and I'm a member of the Columbus Safety Collective. So, for the past two years, the Columbus Safety Collective has been engaging our neighbors and elected leaders around our community's vision for non-police emergency response. This fall alone, we hosted five community forums at churches on every side of our city to hear from residents about the need and their desire for this type of program. It seems that everyone we talked to has this same story of something happening on their block, wanting someone to call, but holding deep reservations about involving police because of the risk of harm and contact with the criminal legal system. So, this is an opportunity that we have right here to provide the people of Columbus with what they are asking for. We have this opportunity to rebuild our public safety infrastructure in a way that lifts up our communities and breaks the pipeline that funnels our black, poor, and disabled neighbors into the criminal legal system. We can create a system that's based on health, anti-racist values, and a bold vision of the future that people can trust. So, the Safety Collective has released and shared with your offices a blueprint for the Crisis Intervention and Voluntary Linkage Program, or CIVIL program, that we're calling this pilot. We think that CIVIL represents a scalable model for anti-racist public safety that prioritizes health and well-being, makes decisions based on evidence, and invests in our neighbors. Now, the need for this type of program is well documented in our city. Council has collected your own data on this, where people overwhelmingly support these kind of models, and as Captain Parrish mentioned, the efficacy of non-police interventions is apparent in interventions is apparent in cities all across the country where we see these models come up. And we've provided a crosswalk of those in that document for you all. So I want to highlight a couple of key pieces of our model that we think speak to some of the concerns raised tonight. So first, trust is essential and needs to be built in from the beginning. We are recommending the creation of a paid advisory board of community members to provide accountability and oversight for this program. This program can be a model of how public safety can be responsive and directly accountable to community. Second, we also recognize that neighbors are the true first responders and have the most culturally fluent ways of addressing conflict. So we need to lift up local expertise by incorporating hiring preferences for residents from high-need zip codes, including these things like signing bonuses and robust educational incentives for workers so they can see a pathway to leadership as part of the program structure. And we are also recommending dedicated communication staff as part of this program to tell this story. So we would like, we think we need investments in targeted recruitment and being prepared to do more of this storytelling that we've seen today to really uplift what these programs can do. You know, there's a poster in my son's daycare that has different community helpers. So we see the firefighter and the nurse and the teacher, and I can see a future where the community care worker is part of this story that we tell everyone in our city. So the Columbus Safety Collective is requesting that the city allocate $10 million in the 2023 operating budget to launch this pilot. So full funding here would be a bold endorsement of the people's collective vision for a public safety system that prioritizes health and autonomy over incarceration. And we think that investing in a robust pilot project now would further position the City of Columbus as a leader in this nationwide movement towards alternative crisis response. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Timed it just perfectly. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions this evening? We certainly appreciate your advocacy, as always. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Sue, you're up next. Erin Harris, you're following. Please remember to state your name. You have three minutes and any organization that you may be with.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Remy and Councilmember Bangston. My name is Sue Valillo. I am the Vice President of Clinical Services for the Adam H Board of Franklin County. Adam H commends the City of Columbus for their commitment to developing alternative response models in the city led by the Department of Public Safety and Columbus Public Health. And we at Adam H thank them for their ongoing collaboration to creating a safety net for community members experiencing a behavioral health crisis. We want to update this body and the public about some of the efforts Adam H is helping to lead to address a larger continuum of crisis care, ensuring our community has someone to call, someone to come, and somewhere to go. I'll focus my comments tonight on the first two components. On July 16th of 2022, the federally mandated crisis number 988 became available, providing a single three-digit number to access a network of certified crisis call centers. 988 users who are suicidal or experiencing a behavioral health emergency are connected to trained crisis counselors where they receive intervention and referrals for service. Franklin County is served by two local call center providers, a primary call center at North Central Mental Health Services, and a backup at Netcare. As the first year has been a soft launch, we expect a more robust public marketing campaign for 988 in 2023. This will be a great opportunity to educate the community about the difference between 988 and 911 and when it's most appropriate to call each number. As evidenced by the success of the Right Response Unit and the Mobile Crisis Response Teams, we know that mental health crises are emergencies, but not always public safety emergencies. Currently, Adam H helps coordinate the Mobile Response Stabilization Services through Nationwide Children's Hospital. These are mobile crisis services for youth under the age of 21 who are experiencing a behavioral health emergency. Similar to and collaborating with the city's React team, Adam H supports a React team operated by Southeast Healthcare to respond to opioid overdoses. In addition, Adam H is working with Franklin County Sheriff's Office Community Intervention and Diversion Services to reinstate an embedded clinician program similar to CPD's Mobile Crisis Response Units. In addition, Adam H is planning to launch community-based mobile response teams in Franklin County in the first quarter of 2023. These intervention teams will include a clinician and a peer rather than a public safety officer, and they will be dispatched through 988. This service will offer a person, will offer in-person support to citizens who are, experience a crisis when there is not an immediate safety need. Providing assistance will prevent a worsening crisis while freeing law enforcement and EMS to be deployed to where they are critically needed. There's a lot of great work happening to transform our crisis continuum, and I thank you for listening to me. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Bangston?
Yeah, just one question around the 988 number, and I know that it's relatively new. And it was brought up as a way for it, I think, to supplement some of the hours that our Right Response Unit is offline. Is that possible right now with the current setup? Or how do we go about making sure we formalize that?
I think we would need to see if the technology is compatible. That would probably be my first question. But yes, we've been collaborating very closely with the Right Response Unit. And if there are ways that 988 could be used to supplement during those hours where the call volume is lower into the Right Response Unit, that would make great sense and be a great resource for the community.
Great. And I know that this was an announcement that happened earlier this year around Netcare and cutting back some of their hours. How does that factor into the 988 number? And are we looking at other partners like, say, Mary Haven or something like that to help support Netcare?
As it relates to 988, Netcare will still be providing that services both in Franklin County and in other counties throughout the state. We at Adam H are working with a whole array of community partners to stand up some other crisis response in relation to that closing of services at Netcare.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down this evening. Erin Harris, and then following will be Helen Anne Sweeney. Welcome.
Hello, hello. Good evening. My name is Erin Harris. I am the bipolar ghostwriter, and I am actually with a few organizations, Ohio Families United Against Police Brutality, and also Disability Rights of Ohio. So I actually have something written that off of my experience, and then I have a few at the end. So if I could just do a man, I'm sorry. All right. So I fight every day for my community. Every day I fight with my soul because I am one of many that has experienced police brutality. And I survived to see today and see what the police are trying to cover from our eyes and make sure that we do not see. They think we are fools without the mental tools to see the type of games they play with our mental. Life has been chess, so let me give you my testimony of the police trying to put me to rest. Being hit in the head, stomped to the ground, pulling out my dreads, body left for dead, but I'm here with no bloody tears to shed. Eyes dangling, but my soul was still hanging. This is my goal. Riverside Hospital is where I almost died just by telling a cop that he lied. But my community knows this is the type of pressure the cops apply. They are bullies running the streets, so once questioned or we do not comply, bullets start to fly. Are those not the facts that the news show? But the cops lie to distract us from the fact that they are not the ones we need helping people like me of color and unique mentality. They need education. You need to know people have different triggers. And like he said before, the uniform, the gun, the walkie-talkie, all of that is visual triggers. So seeing that is actually us feeling like we're a bear in the corner. So that is just a trigger off its own. So it's like, we know that the cops do not have time to be patient because, as you see, they're on a time limit. So it's like, we need patience and we need education. We need them to know what triggers us and what does not. And we need to know that they're there for us to be there to talk to us. And I feel like giving them information from our file would just be red flags to them, and it would just be kind of like threat, 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 threat. Because a lot of stuff that we do, we do not know of what we've done. But it's like an experience of what has happened and actually seeing on the other side and seeing what has been hidden is actually something I've been through. And so I feel like I'm here to speak about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your experience. Appreciate it. Helen Anne Sweeney, and then Chana Wiley.
Good evening, Chairman Remy and Councilmember Bangston and the officials from Columbus. My name is Helen Anne Sweeney. I am testifying for Brad regarding the alternative response infrastructure. We support an alternative crisis response because the community has overburdened law enforcement officers and with responsibilities that are ill-equipped to handle. They have received minimal training on how to handle or interact with those having a mental health crisis or an OD event. Furthermore, law enforcement officials cannot provide the necessary follow-up services to those in crisis. This initiative will relieve law enforcement of having to respond and deal with situations that are beyond their scope of ability. Brad urges the City of Columbus to develop and implement an efficient, effective alternative crisis response system by the end of the upcoming fiscal year. When developing this infrastructure, we urge the city to include the following five components. First, the system should be available on all five police zones on a 24/7 basis. Second, each police zone should have a crisis response team comprised of a crisis responder, trained medical personnel, and an individual with lived experience for follow-up coordination. This follow-up coordination is extremely important to occur in the 24 to 48 hours to ensure that the individual in crisis has received appropriate care and has been connected to needed resources. The National Institute of Mental Health considers this follow-up system by peers to be an integral factor in reducing deaths by suicide. Fourth, the city should create a standardized dispatch protocol so that dispatchers can determine whether the situation warrants either the police, fire department, and/or crisis response team response to the call. An advisory committee comprised of Columbus residents should be formed to oversee the development, implementation, and ongoing program adjustments. Finally, the city should meld the various crisis programs such as React into this alternative crisis response infrastructure so that citizens can access the various programs and resources efficiently and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sweeney. We appreciate your testimony this evening. Chana Wiley, I hope you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, and then Pasha Thomas will be online. So apologies if I misspoke.
Good evening. It's Chana Wiley. I'm with Columbus Safety Collective, DRO, Ohio Families Unite Against Police Brutality, and Ohio Families Unite for Political Action and Change. Good evening, Councilmember Remy and Councilmember Bangston. I would like to reimagine public safety and incorporate requests from the residents of Columbus. Our residents have been asking for a non-police response system to assist them during a crisis, and they are still asking for it. I am representing Jaron Thomas, my youngest brother killed by CPD while in a mental health crisis. Jaron was in dire need of medical attention. He had a diagnosis of schizophrenia. Jaron was so paranoid and scared, all he wanted was the appropriate help. He wanted to escape from this episode and feel safe. Jaron thought he could trust our system to provide the help he needed in the most crucial time of his life. Jaron called 911 in January of 2017, asking for an ambulance to provide medical attention and transport him to the hospital. What did he get? He got a group of officers responding to him and requesting him to put his hands behind his back while they handcuffed him. He was totally confused on what he had done wrong and still very scared. As the ambulance was held at bay and he was beaten to death for something no other than the evil in the heart of the responding officers, the officers treated him as if he didn't exist and took his life due to not wanting to be bothered with another mental health call. Jaron's story is a mirror of the co-responder model. The police showed up at first, and the ambulance and EMT were the co-responders, and they were not allowed on the scene until Jaron coded. This is why Columbus Safety Collective and the residents of Columbus want a non-police response system. If Columbus had a system in place in 2017, Jaron would still be here to celebrate the upcoming holidays with his entire family. I understand officers are not trained in mental health and that CIT training is nowhere near enough hours and does not prepare the officers for real-life situations that involve care, empathy, de-escalation, and realizing the humanity in which everyone deserves, no matter race, gender, economic status, education, or housing status. The City of Columbus has to do better. There are countless people who are suffering mental health crisis and are not being responded to justly. The residents of Columbus continue to ask for this service of a non-police response system. If the City of Columbus wants to truly reimagine public safety, we can start by funding and honoring the request of the residents. The non-police response system is the starting point of reimagining public safety. How beautiful would it be to send out trained clinicians, peer support, and neighborhood leaders to respond and take care of the cause and residents that are so delicate and in need of love, care, and community to address their problems at hand? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wiley. We appreciate you coming in tonight. And finally, we have Pasha Thomas on WebEx. So welcome. Thank you for providing your testimony this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Remy and Councilwoman Bangston. My name is Pasha Thomas. I'm an artist and advocate and currently a seminary student at MTSO, and I'm serving on Columbus Safety Collective proudly with Chana and Mr. Stephen David to provide a viable framework to the city for a non-police response, which Stephen informed you were calling the CIVIL program. And so I therefore echo the Collective's request for $10 million to stand up this pilot that we submitted so that we can add this to the offerings that were presented earlier by your team today. My son Aaron is 23 years old. He is six foot one. He is 250 pounds. He is a black man diagnosed with schizophrenia and autism spectrum disorder. Two months ago, Aaron was in crisis, and I called the non-emergency line, as is customary in our family, in our case, when Aaron needs help. We currently have no alternatives to having armed police show up, which throws people also not only into danger, but unnecessarily into the carceral system. Until Aaron's particular crisis in September, he had been understood and known by Worthington Police, which I might add is a department who is now contracting with Columbus Public Health for assistance with these types of crises. So there is an immediate opportunity to help spread this non-police response into a neighboring city. Because the police know Aaron, they're also aware that he was no threat to me nor to the community. But in this case, an officer decided four days later after the crisis to file her own domestic violence and aggravated menacing charges against Aaron, even though I had refused to file charges. There was a warrant for Aaron's arrest, and he missed two weeks of work hiding to avoid arrest because he was certain not to fare well during arrest and incarceration. This was not the right response. We learned that Aaron's white counterparts warrants are almost always set aside while they await trial, but most often, black alleged suspects are processed into the carceral system unnecessarily, even though they're suffering from mental illness. So we have had to spend unnecessary resources and time fighting these charges, and this would not be happening if we had a non-police response in place. So I'm asking just to echo the Collective that you please fund the pilot, which the Safety Collective has submitted, so that we can provide this vital service to our community in a way that is measurable and sustainable. We have completed five-area community conversations, as Mr. David already pointed out, so that we could help educate and hear back from our city about this model. And we'll continue to educate as we advocate for this necessary response. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. We appreciate you sharing your experience. And certainly, Council President and I had met earlier with the Columbus Safety Collective about a month ago or so, and keeping in close contact to make sure that we're sharing our thoughts and ideas and striving to achieve many of the goals that we both share. And so appreciate all the testimony this evening. It has been helpful. This is certainly not the end of the discussion, but pretty much the beginning. So as we continue to evolve and grow what this looks like with the City of Columbus, we're going to make sure that we stay engaged, make sure we get a webpage up for people so that there is information available, and it's something that's readily available. so that, that there is information available and it's, it's something that's readily available. We are very thankful for each of the presenters this evening, including Deputy Director Dan Giangardella, Ken Koontz, Dr. Mashika Roberts, and Marion Stuckey. And thank you for the thoughtful and robust, comprehensive presentation that, that we received. If you are watching this hearing online, and I know there were several commoners and, and others that were paying attention, we thank you for doing so. Or if you're here in chambers, I know that a copy of the presentation was handed out, but you can also reach out to my office for a copy by emailing lucyfrank@ljfrank@columbus.gov. I want to thank Zach Davidson with the Council President's Office, Chris Maitland, and John Oswald with our Legislative Research Team, my team, Jeff Carter, Jeffrey Carter and Lucy Frank, Nia Hairston in Communications, Mark Carter for our technology needs, and the CTV team for their assistance in preparing for this hearing tonight. I also want to thank the community for their support and for tuning into tonight's hearing. Councilmember Bangston, are you good to go?
Yeah, just want to make sure, one, as the newcomer to council, commend you all and all of us really for this work that we're doing. It's hard work. And, you know, I got onto a council that believed in this idea of reimagining safety, and so proud to be a part of that work. But I do want to just make sure I speak to our last folks that gave testimony, I think it was the four or five or so, that there, there's no questions from me, and I don't want it to gloss over, and I want to thank you for being vulnerable enough to tell your stories and to share your pain with us. And for me, it's my first time hearing it, so it was really helpful to me. So I just want to make sure that I didn't just gloss over that fact for you all. So thank you for being here, and I want to just encourage you all, please to continue to engage with all of the council members around us. We want to get it right. I think that what you see from the data that we have seen today is that we're moving in the right direction, but we will continue to have work to do. What I've always said to folks all the time about progress and about justice, it is not a destination, it is a journey. And we have to always continue to move in that direction, to have it more just and to have a more fair Columbus and society. So thank you all for your testimony today. Please continue to engage with us as we go through this because we have to co-create this together. So just wanted to make sure I emphasized it. And thank you again, Councilmember Remy, for your leadership.
Absolutely. Thank you for those comments as well. You know, we, we appreciate everybody coming in this evening. I also want to thank Adrian Hood, who also commented online during the testimony, and we appreciate that. The community, it's so important that we keep you engaged and you understand exactly what the work that's being done by the people that you see here this evening and many more that weren't here. You know, it's our mission to make sure that we stand this up. It's successful, it's robust, it meets the needs of the community. And so do want to thank Captain Parrish, Sergeant Harris, and your entire teams for the work that you're doing day in and day out. And so it's very, very important. So that concludes this evening's hearing, and I want to tell everybody to stay safe and have a great evening. Thank you.